It's now one o'clock, May fourteenth, 2024, and this is the Douglas County Planning Commission, so I will call the meeting to order. We do have six planning commissioners here present, and Commissioner Neddenrep informed me last week that he was unable to make the meeting today. So we have six, that's a quorum, and I'll call the meeting to order and ask Bryce if he would lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll now move to opening public comment. Public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker on matters over which the Planning Commission has jurisdiction, supervision, or control. The Planning Commission wants to encourage the respectful consideration of all views by members of the public. If the content is willfully disruptive of the meeting by being irrelevant, repetitious, slanderous, offensive, inflammatory, irrational, or amounts to a personal attack, or interfering with the rights of others, the individual will be asked to stop speaking. In addition to opening public comment, public comment will also be taken on public hearing agenda items that are identified for possible action and closing public comment. If you plan to speak on a specific agenda item that is on the public hearing agenda and identified for possible action, then please provide your comment when that agenda item is heard. At this time, public comment will be taken on those items that are within the jurisdiction and control of the Planning Commission. Additional public comment periods may be allowed on individual agenda items at the discretion of the chairperson. It is requested that members of the public comment on those agenda items when they are considered. So if you do have public comment at any point during the meeting, please step to the podium, bring the microphone to your mouth so we can hear you, sign the sign-in sheet, and then state your name, and your three minutes will begin. Is there opening public comment?
Good afternoon. Ellie Waller. I'm not sure how you, as commissioners or the Board of County Commissioners, feel about information coming in late in the day. Yesterday, we received a supplemental at 4:11. I know staff accepts comments, but I'm asking that sometime in the future, when we update Title 20, that you, as well as the Board, consider having deadlines for agenda items. It's not fair to the public, I don't think it's fair to you as well, on the night before a meeting to have to try to get through documentation. We didn't get a lot this time, but sometimes we get hundreds of pages in supplemental, and I think we have to establish some kind of format where it's both fair for the public as well as you folks to have a review time, time to talk to staff if you have questions about what might be on that agenda item. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional opening public comment? Seeing no other opening public comment, I'll close public comment, and we'll move to the next item, which is approval of the agenda. The agenda is before you. We have five items, five items on the agenda. Are there any questions or a motion to approve the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Bryce has moved, and Dave has seconded the motion to approve the agenda. Any discussion? If not, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? The agenda is approved unanimously. We'll move to the approval of minutes. This is a discussion to approve the draft minutes of the April ninth, 2024, meeting of the Planning Commission. Any corrections or comments on the minutes as presented? Paul?
Not a correction or an addition, but I must abstain because I missed the meeting.
Thank you. If there's no other discussion, is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the minutes.
Second.
Bryce moves to approve the minutes, and it's seconded by Dave. If there's no discussion, all those in favor of approval of the minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That would be five ayes, and Paul would be abstaining on approval of the minutes. The minutes are approved. We'll now go to the first of the agenda items, and I will read this into the record. This is item number one for possible action. Discussion on tentative subdivision application DP twenty-four dash zero zero four zero, a request to dissubdivide twenty-eight point five five acres into A, twenty-five single-family residential lots, the smallest being point eight four acres and the largest being one point zero one acres in size, and B, public drainage and access parcels of one point two zero and point five acres respectively. The subject parcel is located on the north side of Stephanie Way, just east of the intersection of Kany Avenue in the SFR one, single-family residential, one-acre minimum net parcel size zoning district, within the Johnson Lane Community Plan area. The applicant is Armil Properties LLC. The applicant's representative is Michael Stanka, Stanka Consulting LTD, APN one four two zero dash two seven dash zero four zero one dash zero one zero. Kate, you have been handling the plans for this one, and if you want to just summarize the information that we have before us for possible action on postponement of this issue.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Kate Maroless O'Neil, Planning Manager, Douglas County Community Development. So the applicant has requested that we continue this item to the June eighteenth meeting. The county agreed, and it's necessary in order to continue with this applicant. So they did request the continuance, and we obliged and are asking that the Planning Commission also agree for the continuance.
Thank you very much, Kate. Is the applicant here? I think they were noticed that we would be considering postponement of this. So are there questions of the Planning Commission members for Kate at this point? Seeing none, then the appropriate motion is on page fifty-one of the packet. If someone's prepared. Oh, thank you very much, Maureen. She has been chair diligent, and I'm always mindful of the reminders that she'll give us. Is there public comment on agenda item number one? Seeing no public comment, I'll close public comment. We'll come back to the Planning Commission for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I would move to continue this item to the next meeting of the Planning Commission, which will be held on June eighteenth, 2024, at 1:00 PM in the CVIC Hall at sixteen zero four Esmeralda Avenue.
Thank you, Maureen. Is there a second?
Second.
Maureen has made the motion to postpone this item. Dave has seconded the motion. I would like to note that the regularly scheduled Planning Commission meeting in June would be on the eleventh, but that's election day, and that's why we have moved the meeting to the eighteenth. So if there's no further discussion, then I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So this motion carries six-zero. Thank you very much, Kate. We'll move to the next item, and this one is for presentation only. Presentation from the Carson Water Subconservancy District's update on the thirty-year Carson River watershed regional drought and water sustainability plan.
Thank you. Chairman, for the record. Carson Water Subconservancy District. And once we get the wires set up here, we'll be good to go. Thank you very much. So today, I'm going to give you an update on our Carson River watershed thirty-year regional water drought and sustainability plan. This is something that we are working for the entire watershed, looking at what future demands of water will be in the next thirty years. Working cooperatively, we hired Loomis to help with the municipal water demands in the future, and also the USGS that has several groundwater models, groundwater, surface water models, that we can put into that database and see what the outcomes would be. So again, at this point, just an update. We are moving it forward, but I thought it'd be useful to have the community and others know what's going on and what we're seeing. So again, the background is to look at the watershed needs for the next thirty years. We've hired Loomis to help us with some of the data gathering, and then the USGS will be using their models that they have developed for the Carson Valley and also them for the Middle Carson, which goes from Carson City all the way to La Haunton Reservoir. We'll be looking at thirteen water purveyors in the watershed. However, at this point, we're only focusing on nine. We're really focusing just on the Douglas, Carson, and Lyon County portions, as we try to get this information to the USGS to move forward, and then later on, we'll be gathering information with the other entities. So again, what we're doing is evaluating future water demands and supplies for the area, utilizing the upper and middle Carson models that were developed by the USGS, identify where the water sources are going to come from in the future, identify any potential limitations, impacts that these new demands will cause, and then evaluate groundwater-surface water interaction. You may have plenty of water here, but you also have to realize that groundwater and surface water do interact, and if you start pumping water, you could impact the surface waters, and so this is one thing we want to identify. And then in our process, we'll identify any potential mitigation strategies if necessary. We're going to be looking at growth, but also, we're going to do a run with climate change as we move forward. What this plan will not do, it will not take away anyone's water rights, it will not propose any changes to the Alpine Decree or Nevada Water Law, and it will not change any water purveyor's master plan. What we're here is providing additional information that an entity may not consider when you start developing your master plan. We look at the entire watershed and say, okay, what's happening downstream, what's happening upstream, what are the impacts, and provide that information to all the entities, so when you start looking at your master plans, you may incorporate some additional information as you move forward. But before I get too far, I want to give you a little background and some information we found interesting as we developed this. This graph was developed by Desert Research Institute, and what they did was they looked at the East Fork Gage, which is the upper gage, so there's very little man impacts. So this is kind of what Mother Nature's providing us as it comes into Carson Valley. And they took the data set from nineteen forty-one to two thousand nine and split it in half. And then they looked at the fraction of the annual flows that occurred by month as it moves through. And what's interesting, if you look at it, you'll see in March now that, as the later dates are, we're seeing more water coming off now than we did historically, so we're seeing a shift. And then if you look at June, you see the opposite, that there was more water coming off in June in the early years and less coming off now. So we are seeing a shift already in the water coming off in the runoff. And if you look at climate change projections, they even predict it even further. So in the future, we may see water coming off much earlier in March and April than you would see currently. And that's something, as you start planning for the surface waters, what does that mean for water supply? The other thing that was interesting is when USGS presented their Middle Carson River Model results, they showed this slide. And this was basically looking at the Carson City Gage and looking at discharge, the annual mean discharge from nineteen forty to basically twenty twenty-one. And what's interesting, it's statistics and all that, but you can see this line, and you can see the line is dropping off. So what the data was showing is that we are seeing less water at the Carson City Gage today than we did historically on a statistical mean average. Well, this was presented down in Churchill County, and this got a lot of people in Churchill County concerned about, does this mean that there's all this groundwater being developed upstream that's taking our water that should be coming to us? So this was a real concern that was brought to that community. They also looked at the Fort Churchill Gage, and you can see the same thing. It kind of dips, and then it kind of flattens out, so it's not as steep as the Carson City Gage, but again, less than what we saw, and this record goes back to two thousand, nineteen ten. So again, a concern, if you're in the lower watershed, what's happening upstream? One of the things we asked the USGS is, did you consider the upper watershed? What's happening when it comes in the Carson Valley? They did not, but our staff, we took the same data set, we looked at it, and we looked at the East Fork Gage. And you can see that there is actually a decrease even up in the East Fork, a slight decline here. So we are seeing some changes in this watershed that's not the future, it's already occurring. And that is something you should be aware of as you start planning this. And this was on the West Fork, and again, you're seeing some trends. So we are seeing a reduction in flows. We had Loomis do some study for us a while back, and I would have you look at the bottom row, and this was the average change in flows that they calculated, so this was an independent group looking at it. And at the Woodford Gage, they see almost an eight percent reduction in flows from forty to two thousand eighteen. The East Fork, we're seeing about a four percent reduction. If you average, you combine the two, and again, the East Fork is a much larger drainage than the West Fork, but we're almost seeing a reduction in flows of about five percent. You get to the Carson City Gage, we're almost seeing a nine percent. So something is happening through Carson Valley that's also showing an impact, larger than what we're seeing, the reduction coming in. And then when you get to the Fort Churchill, you'll notice that it's just under four percent. So it's actually not as bad as even what you see in the upper watershed. Well, one of the main reasons is that there's a lot less agriculture occurring in Carson and Lyon County, and so it's decreased over the years, and so even though you see a reduction coming in, it's actually recovering because of a reduction in agriculture in Lyon County. So the process here. So Loomis has gone to every water purveyor, and we've asked them, where are you getting your water from, your wells, your locations, how much, what kind of growth do you see in the future, and basically calculating all this data. This data is then given to the USGS, and the USGS will be putting it into their models. And they need to know where the locations of the wells are and future growth as we go forth, because as they run this model, they will see, because if a well is closer to the river, you're going to have more interaction with this river than if you're further away. And so this is a whole data set. They're looking and running these multiple scenarios as we move through. Then these results will kick out and say, okay, when we have like thirty years out, and again, when I say thirty years, it's just kind of an estimate of where we want the future demand's going to be, what's the impact of flows in the river, what's the impact to the groundwater basins? And so this would be additional information brought back to every water purveyor in the watersheds, so they can understand as they start looking at their future growth, is there something they haven't considered with their master plans that they may want to consider in the future? So I'm just going to give you some brief overview, some backup information again as we start moving forward. We're about ready to give all the information to the USGS so they can start their modeling efforts. But as we move forward, one of the things I wanted to point out is the different groundwater basins. We found when I first presented this that there were some people confused. So we are currently in Carson Valley groundwater basin, and you can see the area located. Eagle Valley is the Carson City area. We have the Dayton Valley groundwater basin, and then we have the Churchill Valley. And the Churchill Valley is actually around Silver Springs area. Churchill Valley groundwater basin is not in Churchill County. That groundwater basin is called the Carson Desert, so, just to keep people confused, as we're guessing. So, and this is just a list of the water purveyors. Again, we are not focusing on all of them at this point, like the Markleyville Water Company, or even Stewart County, but mostly anyone that's located in Douglas, Carson, and Lyon County, we're looking at it. And projected growth that we've gotten from each entity is from point one to point nine five percent. So let's look at some historic trends. We'll first focus on the Carson Valley, and this is just kind of what we see in Carson Valley, and it was Douglas County. You have four separate water systems. Your biggest one is, of course, the North Valley. This one gets water from your regional pipeline, from Minden, but you also have your own pipes. The current demands are about two thousand one hundred and sixty acre feet. Growth in like the Foothills, Sierra Country Estates, and the Fairgrounds are not expected to grow much at all. Your biggest growth will be in the North Valley, and the number we were told to use is point five four over the next thirty years, or additional three hundred and thirty-six acre feet of water that will be needed. This analysis does not include the Rancho's, Towne-Minden, Indian Hills, they have their own calculations. So this is just in Douglas County's area. So the total estimate over the next thirty years is about seventeen hundred and sixty acre feet of additional flow to meet the future demands in this area. So here's some historic pumping. This is taken from the State Engineer, the Department of Water Resources. They put these pumping reports together. This one goes from two thousand seven to twenty twenty. What I will point out is, if you look at the green, the green is agricultural pumping. So when it's a wet year, you'll see the ag pumping is down. When it's a dry year, it's up, and actually, sometimes higher than the amicable demands. The amicable land is the orange line going through. I don't know if I can. So here's the municipal demands, here's the agriculture. You then have some domestic wells, and then you have other water users in this watershed. So this is here. You'll see that the trend has been going up, and we see continued growth here. However, I want to point out that in this period of time, especially with the municipal use, you've got to remember that now Minden is providing water to Carson City, almost three thousand acre feet. So figure that jump. If we didn't have Carson City taking the water, you would actually see this probably decreasing, and that's what we're seeing. A lot of municipalities over the last twenty years are using less water today than they were twenty years ago. And it's just water conservation, prices, everything else are reducing. And we're seeing this throughout the entire watershed. It's actually happening throughout the entire west, too. So this trend is not unusual. So this is kind of just a bar graph of what we have currently, what's being used in, for this is just groundwater pumping in Carson Valley, and the top kind of yellow-orange line is what we see, the future demands in the next thirty years. Eagle Valley, this is the Eagle Valley groundwater pumping. The State Engineer hasn't done any updates since twenty seventeen. I just met with them last week. They're supposed to have five years coming out in the next week or two. But you can see, the biggest user is Carson City's pumping, and this is just the groundwater in Carson, in Eagle Valley, and they have some domestic wells there. You can see the trend is actually going down through this curve here. Now, this is not the only water source that Carson City uses. They also get, again, water from Carson Valley. They get, they have some wells in Dayton Valley, and then they also have their surface treatment plant, which is a quill plant that takes water from Ash Kings and the Marlet system. So they have other supplies, but this is just focusing on the groundwater pumping, which is going to be given to the USGS. So this is kind of what they're looking at Eagle Valley in the future, how much they currently use and what they estimate in the future demands. Most of their future demand will probably come out of the quill plant, out of additional flows coming out of the Marlet system, but they do anticipate pumping more out of Eagle Valley. They don't anticipate taking any more out of Carson Valley or the Dayton area. So most of the growth will be coming from Eagle and the Marlet. So this is Dayton Valley. So again, you have your municipal use here. You do have agriculture, again, falling, dry years, they pump more or less in wet years, but their municipal use is always higher than what is above agriculture. And this, this also includes pumping that goes to Carson City. You'll see there's the trend line has been decreasing, so from two thousand seven to twenty-one, they're actually pumping less water in the Dayton Valley groundwater basin than they did historically. However, they do look at quite a bit of growth out in the Dayton area, so this is kind of what you're seeing, is what their current pumping in the area, and then the future growth. Churchill Valley. So this is what the Churchill Valley groundwater basin is being done. What's interesting is the biggest user out there is domestic wells. You do not need a water right for a domestic well. However, domestic wells do use water. The State Engineer assumes one acre foot per well. That's how they calculate the estimate on water usage. And so you see that they use about thirteen, about thirteen hundred domestic wells, so they're using about thirteen hundred acre feet of water. The municipal water system is this line here, and it is kind of bouncing up and down. It's interesting, you see it bounced up. They were expanding Highway fifty out there, and so they sold a lot of construction water. Now, most entities, if you're a bigger one, you wouldn't see that, but a small agency like this, it does bump up your use, and that's why you see it increase here. Otherwise, if they took out the construction water, it actually began decreasing even further. And then they have some agricultural users as they go through. So this is kind of the future, what their growth is, not a huge amount. They have a lot of water rights. They're expecting only sixty-three acre feet of new demands in the next thirty years. They have over four thousand acre feet of water rights. However, the wet water's not there. So they're canary in the watershed. Basically, they are going to be limited by the available water supply. And I've gone to their board meetings for the last twenty-some years, and I always said, you have a lot of paper water, but you have very little wet water. If there's going to be any significant growth in this area, it's going to have to be brought in through a regional pipeline or some other source, but that's the only way that that area will really be able to grow significantly in the future. So other things that we have to consider is agricultural change and management. This is something that CWSD staff is working in. We're meeting with the farmers in areas, and just trying to understand what they see the trends are going to be in the future for the next twenty years. Climate change, what's going to happen if it's drier, wetter? We're going to be running different scenarios in these model runs to see what's happening. The other thing is the Alpine Decree. We're ensuring that the Alpine Decree is being followed when we do these modeling. And you have to remember, when the river goes on regulations, you cannot call water downstream. So La Haunton fills in the winter and springtime, but soon as you get the river on regulations, they can't call the water downstream. So what may be interesting is that you may see a bigger impact to La Haunton in a wet year than you would in a dry year. Because in a wet year, they're entitled to it, but in a dry year, they're not. So these are things, again, as we run through these model runs, we'll start seeing the results and give some better understanding of what's happening. And the accuracy of these models, we'll be looking at it and verifying it with the USGS. Just something interesting, and this is the irrigation pumping in Carson Valley, and again, you kind of have these, you have, you know, when you have a dry year, I always have to look at this, can't read it from here. So the blue is the Carson River, and the orange is your groundwater, and you can see how, when it's very low flows in the Carson, you're pumping a lot of water. When it's wet, you're not pumping as much. We're seeing a trend here. It looks like the wet years are increasing, and even in the dry years, they're increasing here in pumping, but we haven't verified that, and that's something we want to start looking into the data and seeing. Are there changes already occurring in Carson Valley over the last several years that we didn't see historically? And this is something we'll be diving into in the next couple of months. So again, goal is determined, if there's significant water and infrastructure in place, understand the effects of future demand and river discharge, and then recommend any mitigation that may be related to future water demands. That's all I have. Again, it's an update, and I'm hoping that in a year and a half, we will be able to come back and actually give you results of what we're seeing in each of the water purveyors. Are there any questions?
Thank you very much. Excellent presentation. We'll open to questions from members of the Planning Commission. Maureen, would you like to start?
Thank you, Ed. It was a wonderful presentation. I have one, a clarification on page sixty-nine of your presentation regarding the Douglas County service area. On our printed page, it says estimated future thirty-year water demand for MNI in Carson Valley is fourteen hundred acre feet. On your presentation, you said seventeen hundred and something.
We found an error in the data?
Just a typo?
No. The data set we were given, sometimes the information from the State Engineer is not always as accurate as we hope. We found some other errors in the other pumping reports, and so we've had to go through and go through the data, and then as we calculated it back, and I just found that error as we started digging into the data, because I knew you may have questions for me, so I went through it all, and then we said, wait a minute, this is not adding up correctly. So that is why you see that. It is a change, so it's a little more than what's in the original report.
Okay. Another question. Personally, I prefer to hear climate changes, not climate change. Climate change is jargon, in my opinion. The weather, the climate goes up and down historically. You never know what you're going to get.
Right.
And I remember when I was a teenager, we were all going to freeze to death.
I do, too.
So it is cyclical, so I, personally, I prefer climate changes. So I personally, I prefer climate changes. And also, I sit on the State Land Use Planning Advisory Council, and I know at our last meeting, they talked about the state over issuing water rights. And there is a program to buy back those overissued water rights, and this is something that's affecting the entire state. Is it affecting our conservancy at all? And have you checked into that program?
For the record, Ed James, I'm very familiar with that program. We looked at it. We're actually in a pretty good situation that we are over-appropriated but not over-pumping. The only basin that's being over-pumped is the Church of Valley groundwater basin. And mostly, again, it's domestic wells. If you assume one acre foot per domestic well, most likely out there, some of the work we've been doing, it's closer to half an acre foot. So where we're thin, the perennial yield of the basin. This program was really to help groundwater basins that are being over-allocated and over-pumped. And so you see this in Diamond Valley, they're going after those funds. There are others in central Nevada that they're also going after those funds to eliminate current existing pumping that is greater than what they can replenish. We are not there yet, so we really didn't qualify. Another basin that's looking at it is on the Walker, and they're trying to do that to retire water rights so they can get more water to Walker Lake. So at this point, we really didn't qualify, and so we did not go after it. We're in good shape, probably better than a lot of the other watersheds around, but that's why we want to be proactive. We don't want to have to react and all of a sudden come back and say, whoops, now how are we going to deal with it?
Well, I'm glad to hear you're on top of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Maureen. Other members of the Planning Commission, Dave.
Yeah, Ed, since I happen to live in the ranches, I was wondering if you know anything about what's going on there. I know they had a water study completed, and we're going to get a presentation of that in June, I believe. And I know that some of the members of that board are very concerned and wonder if you can add anything to that. Yeah. What you know about it.
There is quite a bit of work going on. We're looking at the entire watershed, but the ranches did hire representatives from DRI, and they have done a real depth on the groundwater. We found there's a lot of faults in that area, which is kind of interesting. So when you're pumping water, there may be an impact because you have a fault line that actually blocks the water being pumped and moved. We have used the same growth rate that we did for Douglas County in their area and looking at their future demands. The other thing we looked at was, do they have the well capacity to meet the future peak demand? And basically, they do. However, there's always issues with water quality that could impact in the future. I think basically now you have a master plan that they're working on, and they're trying to make sure that they are going to have the water supply in the future to meet their demands. What we're doing is providing is, okay, you have these wells, you're going to do this. Are your wells impacting the surface water? Because you may have the water rights, but if you are taking water that's supposed to be going downstream, you may be out of priority. And that's the other thing that we're bringing forward to this group on that. So we're working cooperatively with DRI, and we're just hoping to provide the best information that everyone can plan correctly for the future.
Thank you. Thank you, Dave. Other questions of the Planning Commission? Paul.
Did you find that there was any degradation of the quality of the water? That is to say, I recognize and I appreciate your comments about being at nearly a steady state in terms of replenishing groundwater as it's being used. Is there any danger in the local? Have you seen any data with respect to the quality of the water to the extent that the extraction exceeds what it currently is at a rate of replenishment?
Good question. Thank you. Again, for the record, Ed James, we are seeing some water quality in Douglas County. Mostly, it's like in the Ruinstrough area, Johnson Lane, where areas have a lot of septic. We are seeing nitrate levels increasing. The one thing with studies that the USGS has done in this area, if you want to avoid the nitrates, you go deeper, but you go deeper, you get arsenic. So there are water quality issues. As you go north of the airport, basically, none of that water really meets the arsenic standard. That's why you ended up with the regional pipeline to do that. I know that your Douglas County staff is looking at putting an arsenic treatment at some of the wells at the airport in the future to be able to do that. So there are impacts with water quality. The big concern that's always been in the back of people's mind is with this regional pipeline, with Minden pulling the water, are they going to pull arsenic water into their wells? We haven't seen the data that shows that at this point, but that is something that's always been considered and talked about in the future. But at this point, really, your biggest impacts are water quality on the pine nuts, and we are seeing water levels dropping over there, too. And then also the arsenic that you have north of the airport.
Other questions? Lori.
Thank you for this great presentation. The USGS model is not going to consider the upper watershed? Is that what I understood, or?
Well, we have two models.
Okay. Thank you.
But what you do is you run the upper basin first model, and then as the flows come out, then they'll be running that data set into the other model sets.
So the portion of the river that goes through California and Alpine County, that doesn't need to be included in the model? Or is that just at the water gate, that's going to establish the baseline and moving from there?
Yeah, so we are focusing, some of Carson Valley does go into California, so that part there. But we don't see a lot of impacts in Alpine County for the flows. You have some storage reservoirs up there, but again, they're under 5,000 acre feet. We don't see the growth in Alpine County being significant at all. They don't have any ag wells, per se. So the demands up there are quite small compared to the overall watershed. So yeah, we have not included that because we, again, look at the data set coming in, and Carson Valley has a bigger impact than what you're going to see in Alpine.
The recent wildfires, are they having any impact on the quality or quantity of water that's coming through Alpine County?
Yes. For the record, Ed James, yes, they do. Those are always going to be an issue. When you have a major wild, wildfire, you have a lot of water quality the next couple of years. You could have a lot of sediment coming in, which has an impact on the fishery mostly. As we come through, we see a lot more mud coming down. And then also, you can see higher flows initially coming down, too. So we see a lot of erosion and other impacts. So those are there, but they're, mother nature will fix itself, and we go forward. So we're looking at a long-term trend and just trying to figure out what's going on. But you could have something, we could have a 2017 year, where it just pours and rains, or a 23, and then we could have a very 2015, very dry year. We know those swings are going to occur, but what's the long-term trend and what are we seeing? And that's what we're trying to calculate here.
Thank you, Lori. Bryce.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Has there been any coordination with the Department of Conservation and Natural Resources, especially given Mr. Settlemeyer's understanding of the watershed in the Carson Valley and the surrounding counties?
James, we've been, they're aware of what we're doing. He is an ag producer, so we'll be touching base with him as an ag user. He's not an amicable water use user and that. But we also, the Department of Water Resources works under his, under his leadership, and so, of course, we work hand in hand with the Department of Water Resources. So we get a lot of our information, we review the data sets, and that's where we use that information. We also work with the Federal Water Master to look at their data set. So a lot of it's gathering and analyzing this data. They do a great job gathering the information. We focus on analyzing it.
Okay, thank you. I just want to make sure that we don't have each of these studies being done in a vacuum and that there's collaboration amongst each of the entities.
They're actually looking at what we're doing. They think it may be a model for the rest of the state of how you move and interact to all these things. So we are aware of it, and they're very interested. When we have, we have meetings once every six months, and they come to our meetings and listen to the latest information, too. So it's, again, a tool that we're hoping that when we're complete, that the rest of the state can look and use in the future, too.
Thank you, Bryce. We appreciate your, your expertise and your presentation. Could you tell me, how long have you been in your current position?
26 years. I started when I was four, so.
Thank you. I, I think that's a testament to you providing a good, dedicated public servants on this important issue. I did have a couple of questions on some of the slides you presented. First, the, the one dealing with the fractional annual flow on East Fork, if you're able to bring that up. If not, it's, it's a relatively minor question. But we've got the two periods, 41 through 74 and 75 through 2009. So you've got a couple of 30-year periods. This is on page 58 of the packet for people who are, are looking at the packet. And I think that's, that's an interesting distinction to note, that the water flow is coming earlier than, than it is, was previously. But for the period 2010 to present, is this, is this something that you just haven't done because you wait to do it on, on 30-year basis, maybe?
Thank you. For the record, Ed James, we thought we were going to have some students that were going to update this for us. They have not gotten there yet. I'm hoping to update this data because we have several more years. I will tell you that I did a quick and dirty analysis on my own, and what I saw was the trend is becoming a little more pronounced.
So it's continuing to flow earlier rather than later?
Correct.
Okay. Good.
By the time I get there, I may be done.
I hate to make you flip back and forth. If you can go the other direction now. Sorry. I was, I was trying to go in order, but it's not always easy. There, there you go. That one is a, is a helpful one, I think. The range of population growth, and I'm not sure what the source of this is, whether this is, comes from the census data or comes from the state demographer. There's always a controversy over whose numbers are, are more accurate. But you show the range of population growth, and I think you mentioned that this was just Douglas, Lyon, and Carson City for the numbers there.
Are we talking about this one?
No, the range of population growth in the purveyors. I think it might be one before.
Oh, yeah. Okay, that one. So that one, we got from the different water purveyors. We've met with them. What's interesting, the .95 is from Stagecoach, because they anticipate that next 30 years, they're going to put 186 homes in. And that is the biggest growth projection we see out there because they are studying with such a small number. They're also going to be limited by water supply, and so that's kind of where they stand. But there was a proposed development out there that got approved. And again, the developer's putting 168, 186 homes, and so that's why you see that number here. The rest of them, we talked to each water purveyor, saying, what do you think realistically you see your growth going to be in the watershed? So that's the information we got. If there are changes, we have still a chance to move on it, but this is the best information we can, asking each water purveyor, give us your best guess.
So this is not a historic range of population growth. This is a projected range of population growth.
That is correct.
And I'm sure you know, as members of the Planning Commission know, that in Douglas County, we have a growth management ordinance, and that limits historic growth to 2%. Now, there's a lot of nuances in the growth management ordinance as we allow carryover and pools and other technical ways to control growth in Douglas County. But I'm very interested that the projected rate of population growth in all of these areas, the highest is less than 1%.
Right. Now, it may come on earlier, you know, but again, that, that compound interest. I remember years ago, when we did an initial kind of review, I think this was in 2002, we were told at that time, use 4% growth in Douglas County for the next 30 years. Well, that number just took off, and we realized it wasn't a realistic number. We feel that, you know, you may see more growth early on, but when you get to the finally out of 30 years, we believe that you're closer to these numbers. And that was, again, the numbers we were given to consider at this point.
Excellent. Thank you very much. I'd like to give you a chance, maybe, to do a two or three sentence summation. If you were giving advice to the Planning Commission or the Board of County Commissioners on how we should best use the data that you're gathering and the projections you're making, what would be your one or two sentence summation of, of advice to bodies like the Planning Commission or the Board of County Commissioners?
What I would say is, when the results come out from the USGS, we will have a pretty good understanding of what the impacts are for surface and groundwater interpact, interference and impacts. I will tell you that on the Humboldt watershed, the state engineer is looking at this carefully because you have farmers downstream in the lower part, and you have all this pumping going in the upper part, and the farmers who have the most senior water rights are not getting the water that they should be entitled to, and they're blaming a lot of the farming and the development in the upper watershed. They are in a worse situation than we are today. There are times when there's no water actually going down to Humboldt, and the farmers got zero allocation. We're trying to avoid that, because if I come from Churchill County, they're always looking and saying, are you taking our water? What's the impact? This will give a much better understanding of what really the impacts are. Right now, it's extreme. Everyone has a feeling that it's all or nothing. We're hoping that when we get to it, we can limit those, narrow that impact, and then people can figure out how we want to move forward. And also, if we can identify the mitigation, we can then hopefully protect the communities as you move forward. What you don't want to do is develop in a silo and then find out later on, oh, wait a minute, there's an outside force that's going to impact your supply.
Excellent. Thank you. And do you have a projected timetable? I know USGS, federal government is slow at work for the final report.
Yeah, it keeps delaying my retirement. I would say that we're probably looking at late next year as we move forward, because, again, they originally were supposed to be done later this year, but then they lost some of their modelers, and so the data's coming in. So we are going to have a very good product, but it probably won't be finalized until late next year.
Thank you very much. Other questions of members of the Planning Commission? Maureen?
I just have a statement. And Mr. James, you can, Ed, you can comment. We had before us a few months back, when we were talking about the flooding and the denitrification program. And I think that we really should put more emphasis on imposing denitrification on any project that comes before us that has septic systems. And really emphasize the extension of the sewer line and water lines out to the East Valley. I think that's, should be a major priority for the county.
I would agree.
Thank you. Thank you, Maureen. Thank you, Ed. We appreciate your presentation today and wish you many more years of good service. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move on to the next agenda item, which is Agenda Item 3, which is also for presentation only. This is Presentation on Low-Impact Development Practices, including possible revisions to Title 20 of the Douglas County Code. And Courtney Walker will be presenting this information. So Courtney, you're going to, we'll have the staff assist you as necessary to. Thank you.
Courtney Walker, Stormwater Program Manager for Douglas County, for the record. Thank you for having us. I also have Brenda Hunt, and she's the Carson Water Subconservancy District Watershed Program Manager. She works with Ed. Fun fact, I used to work there before I came to work for Douglas County. So I'm very familiar with the ins and outs of, of what they do and how it applies to us down here in Douglas. The reason for this presentation in regards to low-impact development and green infrastructure practices is to kind of introduce you to the concept. It's a, it's a really good segue to the presentation that we just had regarding groundwater and the quality of that groundwater. the quality of that groundwater. Low-impact development practices are a way to promote infiltration of stormwater runoff on your property, which helps to recharge the aquifer and also helps to improve groundwater if widely used. And so there's various practices that you can use on a commercial basis, or even down to the residential basis. You can do it when you're planning new developments, but you can also retrofit existing developments as well. And so we're just kind of here to present the concepts of that, the various options that there are. And I have been working with Jeremy Hutchings, the county engineer, to try to draft some language that could be incorporated into Title Twenty and also our design criteria to help to incentivize some of these practices. We don't want to go as far as requiring them, but we are looking at trying to provide incentives, potentially a reduction in parking spaces if you implement some of these practices. And so we're just going to go through some of those. And then I also have a really cool demonstration project that we did with Douglas High School, with the students there, with a grant through the Nevada Division of Environmental Protection that we received. And so it's just an example of it in our community and a sign that the kids designed to explain what it is, and the purpose of the project is also included, too. So I'm excited to share that. But I'll let Brenda give the bulk of the presentation, just kind of jump in as needed.
Thank you, Courtney. So hello. Again, I'm Brenda Hunt. I'm the Watershed Program Manager with the CWSD. CWSD is a by-state agency responsible for integrated watershed planning process throughout the Carson River watershed. And I just wanted to let you know, we're going to go through this, and there's going to be a lot of pictures, and to just make sure you really look at the pictures, because they're really good examples of what could potential be happening around here. Wait, next, back, back. Sorry. That's okay. Okay. So for some quick background, CWSD is the Clean Water Act, Section 208 Water Quality Planning Agency that's been appointed by the Governor's Office. We receive a small amount of EPA grant funding through the Nevada Division of Environmental Protection to complete 208 planning activities. This report, the Low-Impact Development in the Carson River watershed, was developed with RCI consultants and approved by the CWSD Board in April 2015. It's based on research conducted and provides easy access to these low-impact development principles, the practices, and steps towards implementing them in local jurisdictions. It's available at our website. And in 2015, this report was provided to watershed planning commissions and boards of commissioners and supervisors, and as a briefing, you know, to help kind of start the conversation about low-impact development. At that time, Douglas County Plan Commission and the Board of County Commissioners decided to kind of hold off because you guys were going to be doing some other types of planning. So this is kind of the perfect time for this presentation to happen here, because Courtney's been working on the stormwater master plan and talking about these ordinances now. So it seems like a really good fit, timing-wise. So implementing LID can be challenging in many of areas throughout Nevada, because it's not a requirement to infiltrate stormwater on your site. So as a planning commission, your body has the unique opportunity to promote design changes and improvements in land use, including details relating to infrastructure, buildings, and landscaping. And your expertise can shape both existing new development on lands, limiting the costs and maintenance associated with the stormwater system, while benefiting water quality in our watershed. So LID is just one tool, or low-impact development is just one tool, to help with stormwater needs, and can be part of your suite of solutions for stormwater challenges. So at the end of the presentation, we're hoping that you'll have an improved knowledge about low-impact development practices in Douglas County, or the possibilities. And we'll show you lots of examples and discuss how planners and planning bodies can incorporate low-impact development into their planning practices. So what is the main goal of LID? It filters out pollutants such as oils, bacteria, sediments, and nutrients by allowing runoff to seep through vegetation and soil. Urbanized areas within the Carson River watershed can incorporate these types of principles into their stormwater management repertoire and gain many benefits and enhance overall health of the watershed. Sorry, I'm having a hard time moving. Thanks. So this is a few of the main benefits of implementing LID in the Douglas County urban areas. So reducing localized flooding improves air and water quality by filtering water and keeping soil covered, so it doesn't kick up dust. It can reduce the costs and maintenance of stormwater infrastructure, because it's above ground and it's easily seen and accessible. It helps limit pollution in aquatic habitats, and we'll discuss more of that at the end of the presentation, when Courtney talks about the project that was done by the Douglas County High School students. It improves groundwater recharge by slowing water and allowing it to soak in and be filtered into our groundwater aquifers. It can be beautiful and enhance our hardscapes, including streets and parking lots, while creating shade to help mitigate heat island effects. So why do we care? So required by the Clean Water Act, many of the waters in Nevada are evaluated. Through 2013 through 2020, these were evaluated. And I have a lot of statistics on this slide, but it's important to know that not all the water bodies throughout Nevada are always evaluated, but those that are many are too polluted to meet their designated beneficial uses. So of the two hundred, of thirty-six percent of the streams in Nevada that were evaluated are polluted, too polluted to do a lot of different things. Some of those beneficial uses that they don't meet are such as fifty-five percent of all impairments don't meet the protection of aquatic life standard. Sixteen percent of all impairments don't meet municipal and domestic supply requirements. And fourteen percent of all impairments don't meet the recreation and contact pollutant standards. The types of pollutants we're talking about are nutrients like phosphorus and nitrates. It can be inorganic, inorganic toxins like iron, mercury, selenium. Can be pathogens like E. coli and fecal coliform, and it can be other things like temperature, turbidity, total dissolved solids, total suspended solids, pH, and dissolved oxygen. So suffice it to say, in Douglas County, both the East and West Carson, from the state line to Carson City, don't meet water quality standards. And in the Carson River watershed, in NDEP's report, they assessed fifty water bodies, and thirty-two of those, or sixty-four percent, are considered to be the most impaired, basically meaning that half of the water bodies, over half of the water bodies in our watershed are impaired. So where do these pollutants come from? Basically, you and me. It's non-point source pollution, or it's not from a factory, it's from dispersed sources, things like sediment, fertilizers, salts, pesticides, herbicides, oil, grease. And you can see in that picture, kind of those types of things. So this diagram shows how LID can work as a green filter, instead of this gray funnel as a stormwater, because stormwater takes it away, it kind of manages our stormwater and takes it right to our rivers, lakes, and streams, but it takes it there untreated. So that low-impact development would help actually kind of treat it in a natural way. So as runoff moves across impervious surfaces and hardscapes like roads, driveways, and rooftops, it picks up and carries away natural and human-made pollutants. These pollutants like oil, trash, fecal matter, soil sediments, pesticides, fertilizers, are deposited then into our rivers, lakes, and streams, and, as we talked about, even our groundwater. So these are some pictures of different types of LID practices. So what they do is they minimize the amount of pollutants leaving a site. They reduce the amount of water produced and slow it down, and so you can retain it on-site. Principles can be adaptive. They are effective in urban, residential, commercial, and industrial settings. They can even be in very rural settings. LID site design and layout is really important. You need to think about this before you start grading. You need to think about doing these principles from the beginning. You can retrofit different areas, but if you're going to develop a new area, it's best to think about this during that process, during the beginning processes. So bioretention systems, as you can see, some of those are actually capturing water to infiltrate. There's swales and buffer strips, rainwater catchment systems, and permeable pavers or porous pavement. So we're going to talk about each of those coming up here. So some of these primary principles, and all of these need to be considered when you're starting your site design. So to minimize impervious surfaces, minimize natural ground disturbance, so that you're able to utilize that hydrology. Use natural features, like your, you know, if you've got trees and different swales and things already existing on the property, use those. They work. Disconnect impervious surfaces from your storm drains, so that it runs through and filters. Maximize on-site infiltration and use water as a resource, not a waste product. We don't get a lot of water here, and when we do, we want to make sure that we're utilizing it, rather than thinking about it as a waste product and just shunting it off. So this looks about, you know, this looks like a huge parking lot, and we have a lot of those in our urban areas. So, you know, more impervious surfaces, the more runoff. So planning or retrofitting projects to minimize and disconnect impervious cover, directing water to on-site infiltration areas is really important. You can use pervious pavement or asphalt. It contains void spaces and allows the water to pass through to a permeable subbase. And then that, again, allows that filtration, infiltration and filter to happen. So this is just another example of some of these permeable pavers that you, that are available, and there's even tons more now since those pictures were put up. So directing water to on-site infiltration areas, the beauty here is you're using that LID, you know, you're using LID to water your landscaping. So you get this kind of double whammy, or maybe even triple whammy of, you know, something beautiful, something useful, and you're actually utilizing the resource as well. So this Cabela's, this is Cabela's down here, and that's a very old photo, and I'm sure these trees are much larger now, but it really shows how they created depressions to let the water run in. They have curb cuts, the water runs in. Although this is in a winter, this could easily be a summer storm as well, and the water infiltrates here. The cool thing about Cabela's is they have actually a secondary system, so if you get a really huge deluge at this parking lot, it goes into these features, and then they have a swale around the entire parking lot that also captures that secondary runoff. So again, minimizing site disturbance and making your footprint smaller. Refraining from mass grading on a site. Use the hydrology the site comes with whenever possible. It already works, use it to your advantage. Perhaps, you know, use it in your sales pitch, as it can make for a more interesting development, if it's not, you know, mass graded. And the side benefits of that is it's less dust, and compaction is super difficult to So it's important that during the design and construction phase, work is done to do this minimization of disturbance and protect and restore natural landscape features, including vegetation and these drainage areas. It's kind of common sense to protect your assets, so consider that natural hydrology and the native as an asset. Did it go off? No. And make that part of your permitting and design standards. As stated, compaction is really difficult to overcome, so work with your contractors so that they understand the concerns and have taken proper steps to limit their footprint. So this is actually a tire advertisement, but it really does show you the difference, you know, how soil gets compacted. So farmers know better than to do this, because it impacts their bottom line. So these principles are just kind of critical things to think about during that design So disconnecting impervious areas from storm drains, this kind of just shows, again, a paved surface with curb cuts into a depressed landscape garden. And they have, you know, some trees as well, so eventually you have this parking lot will provide, it'll probably be prettier, it'll have more shade, and it'll be less of a heat island. It also is an opportunity to limit erosion, especially where these impervious surfaces meet bare earth or weedy areas, for that matter, where weed seed can be conveyed, you know, further afield. So having LID or green infrastructure can slow the velocity of water and utilize that water for your landscaping, again. So using existing drainage features can really be cost-effective and efficient as well. It requires less undifferent maintenance and is naturally functioning. It's also desirable from a wildlife habitat perspective. So just kind of, this is just an example of a potential site design, of making sure you're really looking at what the features are and how to minimize where your development footprint is going to be. So this is just an example of a park that, you know, has maximized the site infiltration while providing a beautiful and functional park setting. So in the Carson River watershed, I think bioretention is one of the biggest bangs for your buck that you can do. So landscaping these types of detention basins, you can see kind of a rock feature that would convey water and let it infiltrate. All of these are basically designed to convey, but also infiltrate, depending on the size of the rainstorm you get. But we're going to be going over some of these other features next. So this is just an example of, you know, a parking area where they just didn't even put curb cuts, they just didn't even put a curb, just the parking curbs, to allow water to runoff and water that landscaping swale or bioretention area. And these are the, these tree boxes, this one is in New York City, but they have, there's a good example of these up in Reno, that they have done these right downtown, near the river, where they've put in tree boxes where you have a curb cut, so the water enters into the curb cut, waters, and it's a depressed area rather than a mounded area, so that the water is captured, used to infiltrate there, even in this kind of city, very urban So this is actually a picture of a permeable paver road with a swale. And often, people are not aware of why swales are put into neighborhoods. You know, it is basically to convey water. You often, you know, people often, you know, fill them in, or they cover them up, and, you know, we really need to kind of, I guess, make sure that people understand why they're there. You know, they're there for the hydrology. And they promote infiltration and all of the good things that we've been talking about. So also, you can have these rain garden catchment systems, so you can have, you can change your downspouts and make sure they go into your garden beds. This is actually on the right lower, and I think actually the bottom and the right are the McKinley Art Center. This is, this vegetation has grown up quite a bit since this picture was taken. But basically, you can harvest your rainwater from impervious surfaces, such as rooftops, driveways, into these types of garden features, and it adds an aesthetic element to it as well. So these are really the important pre-project kind of considerations. So, you know, reviewing and updating any existing design standards, and I know we've talked about that already with Courtney, because there's often contradictions about two LID principles. So sometimes, you know, a landscaping design criteria might be that you need to mound, you know, two feet up, so that you're kind of closing, or, you know, maybe an industrial area that you want to screen. But I would suggest, in this instance, you know, that's a contradictory thing to LID, so you want to create, and I guess, an exception, or to allow people to put in a depression and put in trees and landscaping to be the screen. So this picture is a double infiltration test, and this was run at the McKinley Art Center's previous pervious parking. So this picture is a double infiltration test and this was run at the McKinley Art Center's pervious parking. They did this before they put in the pervious parking lot because it was very revealing and they, they said it was worth every penny. It ensured, you know, them knowing what their sub, what their infiltration rates were going to be and how important it was to have subgrade preparation. If you needed soil amendments or anything like that to ensure infiltration. So that's, you know, just planning those things and making sure you do those types of activities before you, you actually implement is really important as well. So there are so many exciting options for this. If you just Google low impact development or rain gardens or anything like that, you'll just be amazed at how many creative things that people have done. I just want to also state that Ed James and I gave a presentation to the, about LID to the Building Association of Western Nevada a few years back. And they were overwhelmingly very supportive. Their main concerns are making sure that regulations allow for creative solutions rather than prescriptive, one-way type options. And that the regulations are not contradictory and are consistent between local jurisdictions throughout the area. Because it gives them some certainty, that's kind of what they were suggesting. So Courtney's now going to talk about the really cool LID project that was implemented at the high school and hopefully there'll be another one too.
Courtney Walker, for the record. The, kind of the catalyst for this project was there's been a pretty pronounced algae bloom in the east fork of the Carson River for several years. The USGS did a study on it to try to figure out what the cause of it was and it was not necessarily determined. And so I started investigating it and noticed that there's a whole storm drain system that runs through the Westwood neighborhood. It's connected to the high school, parts of the commercial areas and things like that. And all of it discharges and the main source that it leaves the high school is this, this grate right here. And there's a lot of bare soil around it. The maintenance staff drive around the, if you turn around where I'm standing, if you were to turn around and look the other way, you have all the baseball fields and the football field and all that kind of stuff. And fertilizer obviously helps plants grow well, keeps them green, probably does the same thing in the river. And so it led me to work with Brenda and a couple of other groups to try to figure out how we could turn this into an educational experience, but a hands-on implementation project with the high school students. And so that's kind of what we've done through this investigation. You can really see that there's, there's the fields here, there's all the drains. They go into the neighborhood here. And then if you walk, it's actually on private property, but it's a very nice property owner. You can see that it discharges out of here and it goes straight to there. So with this project, it was, it was exciting to work with the students to educate them on how this all works. Because a lot of people don't know that the water is untreated discharged directly to the river. So they actually, the students helped us mark all the storm drains in that neighborhood with this medallion that says no dumping drains to river to help raise awareness. We've done a couple of neighborhood workshops. And then we've been doing water quality sampling for the last couple of years. That's what he's doing here is grabbing a sample to test for the levels of nitrogen and phosphorus in the storm drain system that's going into the river. And so as we started the implementation of the project, we involved the Douglas County Stormwater Maintenance Staff. Utilized some of their heavy equipment that we used as a match component of the grant, which was great. To be able to dig the big hole to make sure you have good infiltration in this area. They put a bunch of rock down. And then we worked with the students to actually bring in all the soil and then plant the plants. And then at the end, we came in and also performed maintenance on the storm drain system to make sure that that's cleaned out. The school district doesn't have that type of machine in order to perform that type of maintenance, although it is on their radar now. And so we're hoping to assist them with getting something like that. But here's kind of the finished product and the idea is that the water flows in off of the baseball fields through these areas. And then it goes, filters through all this. Hopefully there's a bunch of infiltration because we have amended everything, added a bunch of rocks, soil amendment, bark plants, the whole nine before it actually goes into here. But it slows it down. And it was pretty evident to see that after the 2023 winter, there was quite a bit of erosion. And so we did some work to the project following up last year to try to expand it a little bit and make it a little more beefy, so to say. And after this winter, it seemed to hold up pretty well and it was at least an average winter. So it's been pretty nice to work on this project and the students actually designed a sign to explain what it is. There is a get back gate here off of Longleaf that you can just walk onto campus to check out the project if, if anybody's interesting, but interested. But it would be a good kind of demonstration, just on a really smaller scale, but kind of showing what you can do on a residential basis. For my, my house in particular, it was built in the early nineties and I noticed the downspouts went into the ground and I was like, where does it go? And it, they had constructed it to go under the lawn and then it would discharge to the sidewalk. And so you're just adding to, when it's raining like it did last night, you see it's adding to the amount of runoff that's going into the storm drain. That's going right into an irrigation ditch, going right into the river. And so I disconnected those, not last night, this was years ago. But actually use some wine barrels to capture that rainwater. And it's great because you can use it to water your landscaping outside, you can use it to water your houseplants. And you'd be surprised at how quickly they actually do fill up. I have one in the front and the back and they look really cool, they fill up really fast. It doesn't even take the biggest storm, you know. And so anyways, just certain things like that and make, kind of raising the awareness that these things are other options to have. So I'll turn it back over to you.
All right, Brenda Hunt again for the record. So I guess we wanted to leave you with a few recommendations before we end with some final thoughts as planners and people associated with the planning community. You have the unique interdisciplinary role to play in the implementation of LID. And I hope this has inspired you to support LID in your planning processes. Courtney, again, has included some LID into the recent stormwater plan and will be, I think, bringing an ordinance forward shortly, sometime, soon. And it, I think it's just important to note that, you know, the reason that we're so interested from a CWSD perspective is because of the, you know, the water quality concerns. And this would help limit water quality issues in the Carson River watershed. So we're really hoping to see these types of things implemented or used as people's, one of their tools in your stormwater repertoire to help with water quality issues throughout the watershed. So just some final thoughts. There is a lot more information available. Since this report was done in 2015, there's been a ton of information put out there in, of, about arid environments. Because everybody always kind of talked about this as being an East Coast thing, doesn't rain that much here, that kind of thing. Well, they have shown that this is really important and you can find amazing information from New Mexico area, Tucson and, and Phoenix area. And there's a lot of people, California, for instance, they're all implementing these types of things throughout their, their neighborhoods. There's even one neighborhood, I think in New Mexico that, you know, I think it's in Tucson actually, that it, they did this in all of their development, their whole, through their whole development. They retrofitted it and it's pretty amazing. So I think that their resources are out there and it can happen. It is kind of a common center approach, if you think about it. It's just basically, you know, trying to utilize the water and, and look at ways of, of limiting flooding and water quality issues. And I think the biggest, the biggest thing is it is a big picture. We're thinking big picture, but really it does need to focus. You do need to focus on the details because it is a very detailed process. And it needs to be done early on in the, in the planning process. But thank you all, that's it.
I was just going to add one more thing.
Yeah.
Courtney Walker, for the record. We have been doing water quality sampling in that project just to kind of tie it to improving water quality to see, does it in fact really make an impact? And although it's only been a couple of years, this last photo is the same location where the river bloom or the algae bloom was really prolific. Is this, you know, oh wow, we fixed it by doing one small project, I don't know. But we're going to continue to sample the same storm drains over time to see if we can get kind of a trend analysis. What we're seeing is, is a slight decrease in the nutrients. But, you know, you don't really have a long enough record to make any sort of recommendation. However, it, it does look better. I don't know why, I'm sure it's because we save the world. With that, we'll take any questions.
Thank you very much Brenda, thank you Courtney, excellent presentation. We'll move to questions by members of the planning commission. Lori.
Thank you. This is an incredibly important project or series of projects that we'll have to undertake. I guess some thoughts that I have are that while it is very cost-effective in some regards, there is a cost related to ongoing maintenance in some of these highly landscaped areas. So what would be the benefit of just generally rock scapes for doing, for water infiltration? I mean, it doesn't provide that same level of infiltrate, or not infiltration, but plutin reduction that vegetation has. But would a rock swale provide a reasonable benefit to, if, if the cost of maintaining landscaping is going to be prohibited?
Brenda Hunt, for the record. I, I believe that it depends on you kind of, you know, your location. And I, I think that a rock line swale, if that's what you need, is better than not a rock line swale. So I really think that when you can put vegetation in, that's great. But if it is a situation where you have low maintenance or you, you need it to be very low maintenance and you're, you know, financially constrained, I think that that's a, a good solution. I mean, that's the thing, there are so many different ways of applying this. And there may be, you know, that might be one way in this, in one particular instance, or there could be five other ways of solving it. So it just gives you a lot of different options. But I think you can, you can use this in any sort of way depending on your circumstances.
Courtney Walker, for the record, just to follow up on the maintenance component, because that is a really important question. The big thing with LID is that they're above ground, so you can see them. If your trees need pruning or your landscaping is messed up, that might be something that you're looking at doing. A lot of times people are putting in these large underground systems and they're never maintained. And there's not really a way to kind of evaluate that and track that. I don't know who would do that, but out of sight, out of mind, right? And so this at least puts it kind of in your line of sight where hopefully you're going to maintain your landscape anyways, because you're looking at it every day, so.
Thank you Lori, other questions from the planning commission? Maureen.
I have some comments, one excellent job, wonderful presentation, congratulations Courtney on that project. You can come to my neighborhood, we have ponds and they're green, so it'd be really nice to talk to the neighbors. There, you talked about education of residents and how the consumer is the one who makes the biggest mess. And I know, I walk a lot and I know that there are areas where people park their vehicles and you can scrape the oil off the pavement with the shovel from their vehicles that are leaking. And there are, like along the Martin Slough Trail, there are times when the dog feces is so thick because there are no penalties. There's no consequence to not picking up after your dog. And there are the wonderful, kind people who do pick up after the dog, but leave the plastic bags along the trail so that county staff can pick up, which is so thoughtful. And in my opinion irresponsible. And then I see along the ag ditches, people who wash their vehicles and then dump their wash water into the ditches. Because they don't, they think it's just a ditch, they don't recognize that it is for agriculture. So there's a lot of education that needs to be done with residents. And I don't know how you're going to do that. I think if there were flyers with photos and that's going to take a lot of money. But I am more than happy to walk and leave them on doors. Because I think door-to-door contact and leaving things on doors, give them to homeowners associations and have whoever's on the CCNR committee, which we'll have one of those later. But if we, I know the people in the, the architectural committees are happy to go door-to-door and distribute things to their resident, residents. And they have contact or the, the boards are happy to make contact because it makes the whole neighborhood look better if, and introduces people to their neighbors. But there has to be a better way to get the, other than mail, because people throw things in the, in the mail. And yes, anything we can do in Title 20 to improve the design review standards. And I think, and I've always been advocating this for several years, to consider adding someone like Courtney or in your position, because I know you're not going to be with us forever. But have someone with your skills who knows the implications of adding these guidelines to design elements when we're having projects come through. Add you to the design review committee or those reviews when projects are coming through. I think it's important enough that someone with your skills be sitting there when projects come through. Because that way those eyes are there and catch them when they're coming through. Because when it comes to the planning commission, we have no say. We can put our two cents in, but it's really up to staff. And that way you get fresh eyes and important eyes and eyes that can assist staff and have a final say in the beginning. So those are my few cents. And also with rock swales, they're great, we have them in my neighborhood, but we also have sprinklers and we get mosquitoes, so keep that in mind.
Courtney Walker, for the record, I just want to respond really quick. I do, I am part of the design review process. However, the way that our code is written now is that you can use LID if the county engineer approves it. And so it's not really warm and fuzzy, it doesn't tell you how to do any of that stuff. And so that's why I've been working with him to try to incentivize it. But I am, I am involved in those reviews and I'm also bringing on a stormwater engineering technician. We converted one of our operator positions to an engineering technician person to assist. She'll be starting June 10th. So there, and they'll be, and she's kind of young, so there's, there'll be some time to, you know, maybe have someone fill, fill the shoes. But I still got longer probably than you think. But Brenda has a lot of, a lot of outreach stuff going on that was just kind of getting started when I left that organization. And so I think she probably wants to share that and help spread the word too.
Yeah, I did want to, Brenda Hunt, for the record. I did want to follow up. So we have a wonderful campaign that we've been doing and it's been, we, we only have so many dollars. So it has been mostly through social media. We have gotten a few commercials in recently, but we've done some amazing videos through a campaign called the I Am Carson River Watershed Campaign. And that, there are videos about picking up your dog poop, there's videos about washing your car. So you just kind of named a few. And they're all related to non-point source pollution and what people can do to limit non-point source pollution. So I, you know, recreating responsibly, that type of, of message. And they're very, if I do say so myself, well-done videos, very high quality. And they are available at imcarsonriver.org. And I, and they're also available on our YouTube and through our website. I am happy to do a whole nother presentation on those in the future if you are interested. They, it started like during COVID, so we haven't really, you know, ever like come to the planning commissions and the, and the county commissioner with that, that presentation. So I'm happy to do that if you'd like. It's very, very fun because they're just videos, you know, of, of amazing, you know, people. And they're people from the watershed in most. And they're people from the watershed in most, for the most part, that have taken place. So it's good.
Chairman, if I may, just keep in mind that a lot of people do not do social media and a lot of people will not watch things on the computer. It's a very limited audience, especially people who are older. So you're not going to touch a lot of people who are doing the damage. Just a point.
Thank you, Maureen. If there are no other questions, I do want to thank you for your expertise and your passion in this, this area. You've done a great presentation. You've got excellent ideas. I know that the staff is, the ongoing work on Title 20. And we've also had projects that have come before the planning commission where they have reduced the parking and some of the other requirements. So we're trying to, to practice some of the things that you're preaching right now. But we hope with the ensuing months, Title 20 can make some differences as well. It'll improve the situation. So again, thank you for, for coming and the presentation. And we'll close this agenda item and move to the next agenda item. So I'll read agenda item number four into the record. This is for possible action discussion on land division application DP 24-0047. A request for a tentative subdivision map to create 31 parcels, the smallest being .84 acres and the largest being 3.42 acres in size in the SFR 1, single-family residential, one acre minimum net parcel size. An SFR 1/2, single-family residential, one half acre minimum parcel, net parcel size. PD Development. Zoning districts in the Indian Hills, Jacks Valley Community Plan. The parcel is located at 3745 Golf Club Drive. The applicant's representative is Chris Wachter, Kimberly Horn. And the owner is Clear Creek Residential LLC, APN 1419-04-002-096. And Lucille, you are the planner on this, so you can proceed with your presentation.
Thank you, Chairman Walder. For the record, this is yours.
Chairman Walder. Five minutes before Lucille gives her presentation.
Certainly. We'll take a five-minute break and then we'll resume with Lucille's presentation. I'll call the meeting of the planning commission back to order. And we had read item four into the record, so I won't duplicate that. And Lucille, we were ready for your presentation on this item.
Thank you, Chairman Walder. For the record, Lucille Rayo, Senior Planner, Community Development. The request before you today is for Phase 8, Unit 3 of the 3B of the Clear Creek Plan Development. The map associated with 3B expired last October. And the map before you has not changed from what was previously approved by the board. There are two phases left to record in the subdivision, Unit 3B and Unit 5, which is part of Phase 11. Staff is recommending approval of the request. Findings can be found on packet page 141 and conditions of approval located on packet page 143. Today, we have the applicant's representative, Brent Nassett, from Kimberly Horn with a short presentation for you.
Thank you very much, Lucille. If you could please state your name for the record and make your presentation, and then we'll move to the planning commission for questions.
Brent Nassett with Kimberly Horn, for the record. Okay, so we're talking about Clear Creek Tahoe, Unit 3B. A little bit of background and overview of Clear Creek. It's been a project that's been ongoing for a while. We've been up in front of this commission a few times. It's about 1,600 acres. It's almost fully developed right now. It's, it's mainly single-family residential. There's 384 lots that are up there. There's a golf clubhouse. There's some other amenities, kind of a pool area, amenity area that's also up there. And then some other items that are associated with maintenance for the golf course and the overall development. It is been approved and it still is just only single-family residential for 384 residential units. A map is up there. The different colors represent different phases. The one that we are talking about today is the item in red or the one that's in red. The rest of them are either under construction, finished with construction, with the exception of one small one that's Unit 5. And I think there's another slide that'll show that more clearly. You can go to the next slide. Okay, so just an overall snapshot for the completion of Clear Creek. It has been a project, as you're probably all well aware, that's been ongoing. 384 lots or units is what was from the beginning and that has perpetuated through the, the project. Seven of the nine phases have been recorded. And when we say recorded, the, the final map, the final subdivision map has been recorded. Lots have been created. 305 lots have been sold. 80 lots constructed and are occupied, 56 lots under construction, and then 59 lots are under design. So overall, that's, that's almost 80% of the lots have been sold for the overall development. And then 51% are either occupied, under construction or in design. So a lot of the roadway network out there is also complete. If you've been out there, most of the roads are finished. They're, they've been in operation for a significant amount of time. The background and all the utilities that, all the backbone utilities that were extended to this project are complete. The intersection with 50 has been complete for a number of years. So we're looking at an almost complete residential subdivision development. Next. Okay, so the Unit 3B tentative map, as Lucille mentioned, the final map, when the original PD was established, there was a series of dates that had to be met for a recording of the, of the subdivision map. For Unit 3B, that, that time had passed. And the main reason was the, the market in it, in itself, like wasn't demanding that this specific unit go forward and not be recorded. It has been approved for construction. Permit drawings were created. They were presented to staff. It got worked through for a site improvement permit from Douglas County Engineering. And the project is about 80% complete in the field. So a lot of the utilities are already in the ground. We're finishing up with some paving now that the weather's a little bit nicer. There's a companion project that's a water project that's going to bring additional fire flow and water pressure to this area. But the main reason for today, this is the same map that was previously presented. The same kind of number of lots, the same orientation generally of the roads. We're just asking for it to be renewed and approved because it expired, if you will, one from the PD. Next. Okay, so a couple of items that, you know, this tentative map does not change. So there's a number of utility and development agreements for this project. None of those are changing at all. We're not changing the number of units. We're not changing the, the type of units or the density or the flows, the traffic or anything like that. This was always intended to be a single-family residential neighborhood and it, and it will continue with this tentative map. The lot density is not changing. The total number of lots for the overall development is not changing. None of the zoning is changing. The traffic and site access is not changing. The civil engineering design is not changing. We have current approvals at the bottom. We're basically prepared to submit a final subdivision map for recording. So that includes the will serve letters from NDEP, Douglas County Public Works. We've worked through it with them. The sewer will serve letters actually come from Carson City. There's in our local agreement that allows for the Carson City and Douglas County to have sewer service to Clear Creek. And there is, as I mentioned, a site improvement permit that's been issued. It's under construction and we're just generally wrapping up construction out there in the field. East Fork Fire, they're the jurisdiction for fire service up in Clear Creek and they have reviewed these plans as well. And they've, they've approved these as part of the site improvement permit. And that's it. Save for questions.
Thank you very much. Questions from members of the planning commission. Paul.
Is there a HOA that covers the entire Clear Creek or each subdivision area, phase, or is there none? I don't know.
Brent Nassett, for the record, there is a, a community up there, an HOA, that's been created for all of Clear Creek.
And so now at this point, because of the numbers that you've shown, just based on the NRS, the homeowners now have the control of that HOA?
Brent Nassett, for the record, yes, the homeowners association is, is in control of a lot of the infrastructure that's been turned over for their maintenance.
The dates and times are all established, I am assuming, in those agreements as well with respect to the process of the overall development. That is to say, there are expectations.
Brent Nassett, for the record, yeah, there is a property report that's issued out for each of these phases that documents when utility services are going to be delivered, when roadways will be completed, when the, I mentioned a water storage tank that is going to provide some of the fire protection for this area. That, that is dictated in that agreement and that is disclosed to all the, the members that are buying lots and then, and then the HOA as well.
So a final question I have in this area, which is the punchline. There would be terrible consequences should this commission fail to pass what is, looks like just a slight delay for purposes as you've described that were not appropriate for marketing at that time.
Brent Nassett, for the record, yes, the desire is to, is to subdivide this area and sell those lots, but none of those lots have been sold because there's not lots to be sold yet.
Right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Paul. Other members of the planning commission? Maureen.
I just have to ask, any setbacks? Any pictures?
Say, excuse me, say it again?
Any setbacks or any pictures? Last time you came.
Brent Nassett, for the record, no, we are not modifying any of the design criteria or any of that stuff. This is, this will be performed like the, the development already has significant, specific plan requirements. We're not, we're not asking to change any of those items.
And last question, is that Tesla House near this?
Brent Nassett, for the record, I'm not aware. I'm not sure. I think there is some out there, but I, I'm not sure on that.
Thank you, and nice to see you again.
Thank you, Maureen. Other questions from members of the planning commission? Dave.
Yeah, this isn't a question, but Lucille, I want to thank you for financial impact, showing that there are expenses involved in these things too. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Other questions from members of the planning commission? If not, we will conclude the presentations and open it to public comment. And if they do have comments that we need to address further with the applicant or the staff, we will move to that after we do public comment. So, public comment on agenda item number four. Ellie, do we have copies for the public? We generally request 11 or 12 copies, I believe, so that the public may have copies of any material presented to the planning commission.
I'd be happy to provide that after that.
I think technically we should not be. We, we can save them till after the meeting and you can comment and we'll refer, we'll refer to them after the meeting. So, but thank you, Ellie, and thank you, Tanya. Thank you. We, we just want to make sure that the, the public is always well-informed, as, as well-informed as the members of the planning commission. Thank you.
I'm ready. Ellie Waller, is the last development agreement Amendment 2016? If it's not, I'd like a link from staff. I will make a public request. Tentative subdivision map for 31 lots expired October 2023. Marketing is no excuse. I'm per, I'm proposing that Title 20 needs to be revised to add more ironclad compliance. At the very least, a monetary requirement should be assessed as staff has to complete review again. Be reminded that the specific plan was approved in 2003. The staff report is based on a PD overlay. Parcels may vary in size. The subdivision met all criteria. Transfer of development rights are associated with the project and some have been certified. The word is operative. Staff has placed a condition that this be in the final recordation. How many units have been built? How many TR, TDRs are actually recorded? The project is governed by a plant development in Clear Creek-specific plant. Within the development agreement, existing rules means all ordinance agreements, resolutions, et cetera. all ordinance agreements, resolutions, et cetera. Related to finding number two, I believe that there's violations in the specific plan directives as far as view shed being destroyed. And I was really happy to see today the LID presentations saying mass grading destroys the land around it. My opinion, the homes are violating the specific plan should have never been approved in those locations. With that said, more scrutiny and oversight by the county is necessary, especially when building permits are approved. How will further... Okay, so the project response was tentative subdivision will conform to density requirements, lot dimensions, and other regulations. How will further degradation of the view shed be enforced in all phases? Be reminded that the adjacent conservation easement by John Esquaga's family serves as a representation of rural nature of the county mentioned in our master plan. Mission statements, quality of rural life often discussed being preserved for future generations. I don't see that happening with this development. The specific plan controlled by the developer has not been enforced, which Courtney was on the design review. There's an eighteen-hundred-square-foot house, eighteen-hundred-square-foot guest house mentioned in a development. This is violating county code. I don't know if it's been built. It's a ten-thousand-square, excuse me, a ten-million-dollar house listed. I brought this up March of 2022 and never have gotten any answers. The pictures of the view sheds, I will turn in this big comment. I didn't turn it in on purpose because I don't want any of this deferred again. I brought this forward in 2022. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there additional public comment?
Should turn on, there we go.
Can you hear me now? Hi, Shonda Purdy. I am a resident of the Clear Creek Canyon, and I can tell you that the golf course sucks. From a residential view of living up there, if you come down at seven in the morning, it takes you thirty to forty minutes to get to the four-way stop from the freeway down. I live to the left of the four-way stop. I live just off of the conservancy. It is a danger. It is a fire danger. The workers that are there, it is a massive amount of workers that come, not counting the residents. There's one road in and out. What are we going to do when there's a fire? They haven't addressed this. They haven't talked about it. We can't go down Clear Creek because it's gated for reasons, the golf course, obviously. We need a better planning for fire. We need a better escape route for fire.
Thank you very much. Is there additional public comment? Seeing no additional public comment, I'll close public comment. We'll come back to the Planning Commission. At this point, Lucille or Brett, if you have any comments that you would like to make that answer questions or respond, I would though note that we have a very narrow agenda item here, and some of the points that were made in public comment are very helpful, very useful, very thoughtful. But we do have to stick to the proposed agenda item and not branch out and discuss or entertain lots of observations on other issues that are not related to the agenda item or the findings that are necessary to be made. So with that, Lucille, anything that you have to add at this point?
I don't have anything to add unless the Planning Commission asks specific questions for me. I don't know if Brent wants to come up and answer any of those questions.
Thank you, Lucille. Brent, if you could just stand by, and we'll bring it back to the members of the Planning Commission for additional questions or comments before we move to the recommended motion. Maureen?
Could we run through one time the TDRs, please? So I put a condition, for the record, Lucille Rayo, I put a condition in regarding TDRs because we're still tracking the TDRs for Clear Creek, and they need to prove to us that they not only, from the very beginning, said that they had TDRs, but before they can finalize this map, we need to clear up that they have provided all TDRs that are required for the subdivision. As I understand it, when they dedicated a lot of conservation easements, they had development rights with those, and they, those were counted as TDRs. For the record, Lucille Rayo, that is correct, but we want to make sure that they have given us exactly what's required. Thank you.
Thank you, Maureen. In the absence of Mark, you are a very good representative to make sure we're on top of things with TDR. So I'm sure Mark will review in a minute, and thank you himself. Other questions or observations from members of the Planning Commission? Lori?
Thank you. I actually, when I saw the site, it's quite an impressive development up there. And although I'm typically not a fan of flag lots, and I was prepared to think that that was not a good design aspect, I think that there has been some consideration given to grading specifically a home site and not taking off tops of hills and flattening huge areas. So I do appreciate that that has been somewhat thoughtful and represents some of the LID concepts that we just discussed. This is not a portion of the site that is visible from the valley. It is, on the other side of the ridge, you can see the Carson Range from that area, but you cannot see the Carson Valley from that area. So I don't think it will degrade any more of the view shed from the Carson Valley. Although I do appreciate that that has changed dramatically over the last few years with some of those houses being quite massive and quite visible now from the area below. I do think that there is a fire road, and perhaps the engineer can address that, emergency access road down into the Jacks Valley area. So maybe that's something that we can clarify. But I do think that, given the way this design has come about, I think it is a good use of that site and a good compromise to providing development opportunities but respecting the landscape. There is one area, and I'm sorry, I can't open up my packet right now. There's one area where there's quite a significant drainage between two lots off of Montane. No, what's the other court? I guess it would be the other cul-de-sac, the lower cul-de-sac. No, it's off of, I can't read what that said.
For the record, Lucille Rayo, so we have Montane, we have Rose Summit Trail, Redding Way, and Golf Club Drive. Walton Toll Road also...
Oh, yeah, it's the, it's where your cursor is, just that southern cul-de-sac. No, in the red.
Okay.
Right in there, right in there. There's a pretty good drainage through there. And so to me, it looks like there might be some issue getting a development, two development sites on those two sides. So I'm wondering if the, is there an, is the representative, can you talk to that development?
For the record, Brent. I said Kim Lee Horn. So there's two questions there. The first one about the fire access road. So there is an existing fire access road on the south side of the project that does come down to Jacks Valley, and then it goes, it connects to the existing Schneider Ranch Road that's down there. So the second question, each of the lots has been, I would say thoroughly reviewed by all, to review the, I think, some of the view sheds that you mentioned earlier, but then also from a buildable envelope. So each lot has grading that we look at to make sure that we're not exceeding slopes, constructing on areas that, you know, might otherwise have trees and other things. So there is a drainage area that comes through this area as part of the previous unit, which is Unit Six, and that drainage channel will come through. There is a grading and drainage easement that will be prepared and recorded as part of the subdivision map that will then allow for that maintenance to happen and kind of protects that area from any sort of development or encroachment and things like that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lori. Other questions from members of the Planning Commission? Paul?
Not a question, but a comment, because we're dealing with a subsequent request based upon a little bit of tardiness. I am sympathetic to the comments we heard from the public with respect to the project as a whole, but I also agree with our chairman's comments that we have a very limited scope and review of what has been agendized today. In view of that agenda item, and in view of what is recognized that's necessary for us to consider today, consistent with the consequences, which are dire if this commission fails to provide the approval, I am in favor of granting this tentative subdivision map, or actually reinstating it, certainly. I don't know what the proper comment was with conditions one through eight and the conditions on pages one forty-three through one forty-eight concerning TDRs and other issues that were raised by Commissioner Maureen, and I, and that's basically the way I see it. After all, facts and circumstances have been considered, so I'm in support of staff's recommendation.
Thank you, Paul. Other comments from members of the Planning Commission? I would note, the findings are on page one forty-one. So if you do have a concern about this particular agenda item, you could cite a particular finding that you believe cannot be met. And we don't have a recommended motion in the packet, but I think if we're at that point, the packet, page one thirty-eight is the title of the agenda item, and that would be simply to move forward on that. Bryce pointed out, I'm missing the page that has the recommended motion. Thank you. So if there's no other comments, then I'd be happy, and Paul, if you could switch off your microphone there.
Sorry.
That's all right.
I like the attention.
It happens to all of us. If someone is prepared to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend approval to the Douglas County Board of Commissioners tentative subdivision map, DP two-four dash zero-zero-four-seven, subject to the conditions set forth in the staff report, based on the ability to make the required findings.
Second?
Bryce has made the motion, and Maureen, a second to recommend approval. Is there a discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So in this, it's a unanimous six-to-zero vote for approval of this agenda item. We'll now move to agenda item number five, and I will read this into the record. This is for possible action discussion on an appeal, DP twenty-four dash zero-zero-eight-six of the Community Development Director's decision to deny development application, DP twenty-four dash zero-zero-four-eight, a request for a minor variance to reduce roof pitch from the minimum county standard of four and twelve down to one-half and twelve. The parcel is located at nine fifty Heavenly View Court in the SFR two zoning district, single-family residential, two-acre minimum net parcel size in the Gardner Ville Ranchos Community Plan. The appellant and original applicant is Pat Clark, Building Concepts, representing the property owner, Gemberling Living Trust nineteen ninety-eight, APN twelve-twenty-dash-seventeen-dash-five-oh-one-dash-zero-two-seven. Linda, you are the planner on this, and we do note that there's two actions that we have to take. First, the finding that the appellant has standing to appeal, and then move forward with the decision on the variance. So Linda, you can make your presentation. We'll hear from the appellant, and then we can hear public comment. We can entertain questions, and then move to the two questions of the appeal and then the variance. AJ, am I on the right path, or do we need to start quickly with the decision on the standing to appeal?
AJ Haynes from the Douglas County DA's office. Both issues need to be addressed, but not in any particular procedure. So if you'd like to just hear the entire appeal and all the issues before hearing a motion on standing, that would be, that would be fine.
Without objection, I think that would be the most efficient way to conduct our business today. So Linda, go ahead, and then we'll hear from the appellant.
Okay. Good afternoon, everyone. Linda Doherty, Community Development, for the record. Today, you're going to be presented with an appeal to a denial of a minor variance for roof pitch. The property is located at nine fifty Heavenly View Court in Gardner Ville, and page one seventy-four of your packet has the vicinity map, and page one eighty-three has an aerial view of the homes on that, on that street. Here today to make this presentation on behalf of the parcel owners is Pat Clark of Building Concepts.
Pat Clark, Building Concepts. If you can pull that mic up a little bit and speak into it, that would be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So I'd like to introduce myself. I'm a Douglas... How about if I get closer? Like that? Are we good? So my name is Patrick Clark. I'm a Douglas County resident, seventy-seven, Douglas High School, UNR, and I've run a engineering and design company in town here for the last thirty-plus years. So what we're here to talk today about is the Gemberling residents and their denial of a right to build based upon a roof slope. So the situation, briefly, is that the property owners identified a lot, six ninety Heavenly View Court, thank you. What is it?
Nine fifty.
Nine fifty. And it's a beautiful lot, has great views, a wonderful neighborhood. And they proceeded to contact the Architectural Review Committee that is titled to the property, and they garnered approval for their proposed design prior to even purchasing the lot. And the way they accomplished this is they already had renderings of what they wanted, and so they sent that to the ARC, got approval, and then agreed to purchase this lot. So we, the property owners then spent tens of thousands of dollars over the end of year of their time developing construction documents for the proposed structure. It's over four thousand square feet of living, has two thousand square feet of RV garage and garage, two thousand square feet of covered opening. It's a pretty large structure, over eight thousand square feet of roof, and probably three to four million dollars is probably the anticipated build price. So it's a pretty elaborate property. It's estate level, and the lot is an estate-level lot. So during building permit submittal, it was determined that a minor variance due to roof slope was still going to be required. So we filed for it, and even though we had the ARC approval that was already in our pocket, unfortunately, no minor variance was denied, blocking our access to completing the building permit and stopping the project. So how did we get here, where the Douglas County planning is reviewing and controlling roof slopes? So you have to look back to ordinance nine-nine dash nine oh-two, which Douglas County wrote in response to a state legislation that came through that prohibited local ordinance, or local jurisdictions from restricting the use of modular homes. Okay, it came through in about ninety-nine, I believe, and then the ordinance was written directly after in response to that. The state determined that a modular home would have to be treated equally to a site-built, stick-built home. So there was no, no blocking the use of a modular home. So what happened is the Planning Commission at the time got together and quickly discussed what they did not like about modular homes. And there was a small list of items. They didn't like that the roofs were flat. They didn't like the eaves were short. They didn't like that the buildings weren't very deep, and they didn't like the fact that the front was sort of boring, right? They were big boxes. So they did their best to write some requirements that would help them to prop up the level of complexity for the modular homes in order to prevent the degradation of what they perceived as the property values for the site-built, stick-built homes. Okay? So they did their best. These things were written, and if you can imagine what a traditional, say, mobile or modular looks like, you can kind of see what they're fighting against. The reason the modular homes don't like roof pitch, and they don't like long roof eaves is because of shipping considerations, right? The shorter the roof, the shorter the eve, the less building... The shorter the roof, the shorter the eve, the less building they can put on the truck because it can only be so wide or so tall. So anyways, the point I'm reviewing all this is that these regulations had limited architectural merit. They were there to serve a purpose that the county was trying to protect their citizens for at the time, right, which was that they believed might be an incursion of a huge amount of modular homes, right? So over time, these requirements morphed in what we have as architectural standards today, but the reason I wanted to review these is they aren't really architectural standards. The providence of them really dictates what they are, right? They were there to promote value and so that a nicer home doesn't feed value to a less expensive home nearby because that's the way real estate works, right? If you have the, the cheapest house in a nice subdivision, you're going to get more value, and if you have the nicest home in a subdivision, you're going to lose a little value to your neighbors. It's just the way it works. So in that ordinance, you can find the finding that we're supposed to make today when you do not have a minimum four and 12 roof pitch slope, okay? The architectural style proposed provides compensating features, and the proposed dwelling will be compatible and harmonious with existing structures in the vicinity. Excuse me. I don't think we need to spend much time on the compensating features portion because the architectural merits of the, of the project, I think, are pretty solid, plus in the response from staff and the denial, they focused merely on compatible and harmonious with existing structures. So I don't think we need to talk about the top one, but compatible and harmonious with existing structures is where the problem strikes, okay? So we don't need, I mean, we could have a discussion about roof planes and architectural merit. In general, the reason why on traditional houses we have steeper roof planes is because of the materials that were traditionally available. We wanted steeper roofs so water would shut off faster, and the water wouldn't soak through whatever the roofing material, often wood, sometimes clay, but the longer the roof, or the longer the water sat up there, the more likely you'd have a roof leak. So now we have modern materials that allow very low roof slopes with the surety that you will not have roof leaks. They last longer, and short roofs, or short or sloped roofs often outperform steeper roofs now because of the durability of the roofing, the less exposure, they pick up lower solar effects and things like that. So they're very popular. You need not go further than Clear Creek to see how popular low-slope roofs are, so. Anyways, the problem comes in when the ordinance finding says that the subject property must be compatible and harmonious with existing structures in the vicinity, and they are specifically referring to, in this case, roof slope. So if I were to propose any roof slope less than four and 12, I don't see a single place that you could put one in Douglas County that would be acceptable to meet this finding. So I went from has anyone ever been able to meet this finding to can anyone ever meet this finding? So we have probably processed a half a dozen minor variances due to roof pitch, maybe a dozen over the years, and none of them have met that finding. So why is that? We'll discuss that briefly, but the point is, is this finding cannot be met ever because there are no structures like it in existence, so how could you create the first one? Because it has to match those existing structures nearby, and they don't exist. Even if you were to argue that if you placed a structure well out of town, you would still, as a planner, maybe to look at the nearest houses for compatibility, right? So even in that case, you would never comply because none of the existing homes have roof slopes under four and 12. So we have to take a quick, quick look at, at the minor variance process and how it works, right? So notification is given to a small, for minor variance, it's very minor, hence in the name. So notification is given to the adjacent properties only, I believe, or maybe a minimum radius. I think there's a minimum that you have to notice. And then that is sent out, and if there's no responses back, then the minor variance is granted. So in this case, we got some negative responses, people that don't like the proposed architecture. And I can understand that. I mean, a modern-style architecture isn't for everybody, and I understand that. The problem I have is that we have devolved the whole process down to where a few of the neighbors get to decide what my client gets to build on their private property, even though they had ARC approval, and they want to build it. A few neighbors get to make this decision, and we're out. So the, you know, again, I don't think anybody has made this finding successfully in the past. I know the minor variances due to roof pitch have been approved, but that was due to a lack of negative response, so. Moving forward, you know, I do look at, while analyzing this, who should decide what the roof slope should be on a structure? So I kind of set a, you know, a line. I mean, I've got the property owner and Architectural Review Committee, right, that's titled to the property or CCNR tied, then maybe Douglas County Planning, and then, of course, the board, and then, and then maybe we get down to where adjacent neighbors or non-adjacent neighbors would play a role. But we have this inverted where literally the neighbors get to decide whether this is built or not, and I think that's too far away from, you know, the goal of what was set. Keep in mind, too, that Douglas County planning really isn't in the architecture game, they are in the value game. You know, nobody there is really, I don't want to say qualified, sorry, Linda, to, to assess architecture, I mean, it is art, if you will, so it's a sensitive subject, but they are there to try to protect the property rights of other people. But in this case, I argue that this should be based on a value basis, not upon whether or not it has a traditional roof slope or not, so. What are we asking for? Well, I believe that whenever an ARC, an Architectural Review Committee, is present on a property, that should be the end. If we have ARC approval, Douglas County's architectural standards should not be consideration. There's several examples of that. I mean, one of the things that I do know is that Clear Creek has been exempted from these same architectural standards. Why is that? If they're that important, they should apply to the entire county, right? So, you know, they just, we knew that, or they knew they were going to get a plethora of low-slope requests and low-slope designs, and so they, they applied for an exemption just to save time because they were planning and doing a lot of minor variances for literally half the projects up there. So they were granted an exemption in their development agreement to not have to comply with the architectural standards of, that are listed in, in the county because they have a rigorous ARC review. I'm pretty sure that was part of the reason why that was granted. Along this vein, if, if the ARC doesn't grant exemption from this standard, I met with a client the other day who wants to build a three, four, or five million dollar house in Job's Peak with the curved roof, shallow curved roof that does not meet the standards. So even though Job's Peak has their own fairly rigorous design review, there's no guarantee he could do that. And I had to share that with him because this was, you know, impending on our docket here. So the reason is, is because there's no, there's, the only one with the exemption currently is Clear Creek. So now we have to warn all of our clients that even though you have an ARC where you're at, we need to maybe try to accelerate a minor variance for, for roof pitch before we even get into design because any neighbor could shut this down at any time if they don't like it. So I just, that, that's a problem. So the other thing is, I believe that the finding should potentially be ignored or ultimately modified or abandoned as it has not ever and cannot be met. Nobody has met that finding, whether they have a minor variance for roof pitch that was approved or not. They never met that finding because there's no houses like it near any house that we had done in the past, so. And the final point is, the intent of the ordinance was to preserve value, and inarguably, this is a quality project, it's very expensive, and for protection of the neighbors, due to property values, this qualifies because they're going to hold up the values and increase the neighbors' property values. They just aren't doing it with the style of architecture that a couple of the neighbors approve of, so. That is my last point.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your presentation, and I think we'll entertain questions from the planning commission now of the appellant or of staff before we move to a public comment. Paul?
Mr. Clark, this particular request, first of all, for the ability to appeal and also the appeal of the director's decision on this project, am I correct that this project has nothing to do with a PD? It's a single-family dwelling?
No, this is a single, this is, I think the last undeveloped property in these small subdivisions.
All right, and it's not subject to any development agreement?
There's no, not that I'm aware of, no.
It is not a community-based standard, and as a matter of fact, I think I've heard you admit that the building as designed does not comply with 20.690.030213A. It does not because of...
Yeah, it does not have a minimum roof slope of four.
Right. You know, in view of the circumstances where you're attempting to, well, let me put it in a different way, do you agree with me that the circumstances of Clear Creek are different from the single-family dwelling that we're talking about now in a different community?
No, how so?
Well, if you look at the standard, and it has a PD, and it has a community that was designed as a whole, we just had that issue before us, it has a development agreement, none of those factors exist for this single house. That's why I can't see how I can give, a we could give you relief from the ordinance, from the county ordinance. I know you're asking for a change in that ordinance, but this body can't by fiat change an ordinance. Do you see what I'm saying?
I, I see what you're saying. I, I do raise the point that outside of Clear Creek, literally Job's Peak would, would be maybe the most other critical Architectural Review Committee out there, they don't have the authority to bypass this either. So, and I don't think that, I think that's been missed at times. I don't believe that every, maybe by accident, but I, I don't believe that other low-slope roofs even in Job's Peak were forced through the, through the process. And I'll have to check. There's a couple in Job's Peak that have low roof slope, and they could be older. I mean, this has been on since 99, but I'd have to check, but I get, I just find it ironic that an entire Architectural Review Committee can have a say in what is built, but still the county is going to impose these relatively arbitrary standards on top of that.
I understand your position, but you realize that an Architectural Review Committee, much as an HOA or standards of review with respect to an HOA, are all private.
I'm sorry?
You, you agree with me, those are all private, everything that I've just articulated?
That's correct.
This, however, is a county ordinance, and when individuals have made commentary, as is reflected in Mr. Delayer's final decision on the initial decision, it is difficult without changing the county ordinance to provide you the relief, or not you, but...
Well, do you understand that, that the problem is, nobody can meet this finding?
Say again?
It's impossible. Nobody can meet this finding unless they build with four and 12 or greater roofs. It's impossible to meet it.
And I appreciate your position. I appreciate your position, but just sitting here for a little over a year, I think we have allowed a tremendous amount of development in this valley that is not run up against this particular ordinance. I'm not here to argue with you, I'm just telling you the facts, at least from my limited experience here on the planning commission, which is just a little in excess of a year. We haven't seen this. This is the first time I've seen it.
Don't, no, I, I agree, but do you, do you understand the arbitrary nature of this refusal compared to the previous approvals?
Well, that's a different issue for a court of law. If you believe it's an arbitrary and capricious ordinance, or it's applied in an arbitrary or capricious manner, that's not for us to decide.
Okay.
But thank you. I appreciate your decision.
But I just want to make the point that the, you know, we have a finding that is...
I appreciate your position, is what I'm saying.
It's unfounded.
Thank you, Paul. Dave?
Yeah, I see this as a conforming issue, and your argument itself says it doesn't conform, so I don't know how we can go against what you're saying. It doesn't conform.
Thank you, Dave. Other questions from members of the planning commission before we move to a public comment? Maureen?
Just a quick question about the ARC. And my, there's no HOA in this neighborhood.
No, there's no HOA.
So how are the CCNRs enforced in this neighborhood?
Civily.
Pardon?
Civily.
Could you turn on your microphone, please?
Civily.
There you go.
Civily. So if someone violates the requirements, you know...
And how many members are on the H, the ARC?
I'm unaware. It's a small subdivision. I would guess there's six or eight properties in this subdivision.
Because I know when they, when they filed the documents, when the subdivision was just lots, that there were three people, Mr. Biscota, his wife, and another person, a real estate agent, and, and that was 20 years ago, 20 some odd years ago. And I don't know if they ever lived in the subdivision, and I don't know if Jeff lives in the subdivision now, and so my question to you, which I don't know if you can answer, is how can he approve or give approval to a home to be constructed in the neighborhood if he does not live in the neighborhood or sit on the ARC committee? If, this is just something that I've been ruminating over since we got our packet because he's not affected by it. So it's, if you can answer that, great, if...
Well, my understanding is that Jeff Pachota is the original developer of the subdivision and why he is on the principal ARC, and unless he was replaced through adoption of modified CCNRs, then he would still be the ARC for the subdivision. The property owners could replace him at any time, but to the best of my knowledge, they have not.
Thank you, Maureen. Other questions? AJ, would you like to join in on the dialogue?
AJ Haines from the Douglas County DA's office, if I could. I just wanted to, just make sure to provide a point of clarification. The standard that's being debated here is whether or not the proposed dwelling will be compatible and harmonious with existing structures in the vicinity. So that's the standard that first staff considered when this was presented and now this board is considering. So there's been a lot of debate so far about whether the Architectural Review Committee approved the project or whether other neighbors have disapproved of the project, but those are sort of ancillary considerations. The focus of this, this commission's review needs to be on whether the proposed dwelling is compatible and harmonious with existing structures. And if you look at the county's response, I, I think they focus in on that. It states in, in there, "Staff is not questioning the quality of proposed materials, although the proposed modern-style home is a nice-looking home, its architectural style is very different than the surrounding homes, which are country-style homes with roof pitches of at least four to 12. The proposed roof pitch is one-half to 12, essentially a flat roof. There are no flat or low-pitched roofs in this development, nor the developments across from behind Heavenly View, Rocky Terrace, and Rainchateau Ranch." So the staff's position is not, neighbors don't like it, so we're not going to approve it. Staff's position was, the architectural style is not consistent with that development. The only reason I think staff brought up the fact that neighbors are opposed... The only reason, I think, staff brought up the fact that neighbors are opposed was in response to the assertion that this was approved by the Architectural Review Committee. So, that's sort of the, the evidence to consider, you know, in contrast to what the county decided, the appellant is now saying, "Well, hey, this was, this was approved by the Architectural Review Committee", and then sort of the rebutting evidence is that, "Well, there are also neighbors that are not in favor." So, it, everything can be taken together, you can look at all of that evidence, but ultimately, the determination needs to be based on whether the proposed dwelling will be compatible and harmonious with existing structures in the vicinity, and that's the extent of the review.
Thank you, A J. If there's no other comments or questions from the Planning Commission now, then I'll open to public comment. So, sir, you may sit down, and then if we have further follow-up, we can come back to you. I'll open this issue, Agenda Item 5, to public comment. Please step forward to the microphone, sign your name, state your name, and we'll begin your time.
Rachel Jones, for the record. I actually do live on Heavenly View Court, it's my neighborhood. Jeff Piscota does not live in our neighborhood anymore. He hasn't for the 12 years that I've lived there, because I bought his home. I don't think it's a matter of it having the value of what the rest of our neighborhood homes are and what we all see. It doesn't match our neighborhood, and I think that that's what a lot of the problem is, that our neighbors are finding. I don't agree with the pitch of the roof. It looks like it belongs on a beach, looking, overlooking the beach, not our neighborhood, which is, like you were saying, country ranch-style homes. And so, I'm sorry that it's how I feel. I know a lot of the other neighbors feel the same way, and it just, it just doesn't fit in our neighborhood. Clear Creek did the right thing. They went above and beyond and got the exceptions to do whatever roof lines that they want to do. That's not how our neighborhood is, that it was developed. This is the last lot, it's lot number 11 in there. It's the last dirt lot, and it was expensive, it was $650,000. These people paid a lot of money for two acres. But Rain Shadow, Rocky Terrace, same thing, you know? They, they all have certain pitched roofs, and nobody has flat roofs anywhere around us. So, I ask that you guys do what you did in the beginning, and, and what I feel is to do the right thing, that they need to go back and to the drawing table and put a different roof on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there additional public comment? Seeing no additional public comment, or close public comment, we'll bring it back to the Planning Commission. As the packet says on page 163, "We first must determine that the appellant building concepts has standing to appeal, or does not have standing to appeal." So, if we can handle that question now through a motion and resolution of that, then we'll move to the next portion, if necessary. Bryce?
Mr. Chairman, I move to find that the appellant building concepts has standing to appeal.
Second.
Bryce has moved, and Maureen is second, that the appellant has standing to appeal. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So, it's a 6-0, that the appellant does have standing to appeal. Now, the next question is the Planning Commission motion, and there are three options, either affirm, modify, or reverse the decision of the director on this particular issue. We can have further discussion or questions, or we can move to a motion. Paul.
Mr. Chairman, I move to deny the appeal of D P 24-0086, and uphold the decision of the community developers director to deny development application, D P 24-0048, which was a request for a minor variation to reduce roof pitch from the minimum county standard, and indicate that we agree with the director's decision that it is directly violative of 20.690.030Z (13) A, small a in parentheses, such that we are not in a position to, to overrule the director in this circumstance.
Thank you, Paul. Is there a second to Paul's motion?
Second.
Dave seconds the motion to affirm the decision upholding the denial of the minor variance. Is there discussion? I would like to just make one quick, one or two quick comments. First, I'm always very sympathetic to individual landowners and property rights that landowners have, but I think, as Paul has explained, and Maureen has given good amplification answers, Dave, we have to follow Title 20, we have to follow the code. It's, it's not necessarily always a question of the value, this could be a $10 million house, and if it doesn't meet code, it's not something that the Planning Commission should be reapproving. But, again, I am sympathetic to individual landowners. I would encourage the involved parties to explore the other options that they might have, either for redesign, or this, as I believe A J. has stated to me privately, this can be appealed to the Board of County Commissioners, and further action could be taken in other venues. But, I do feel that the motion is proper and should be approved. So, if there's no other discussion on the motion, then I'll call the question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So, in this, it's six votes aye and no votes nay, and the decision of the director is affirmed. We will now move to a closing public comment, and again, please come to the podium, state your name, and we will begin your time.
Good afternoon. Ellie Waller. There are unintended consequences of developments running their own specific plan. Clear Creek has been mentioned today. They are in charge of their design criteria and other criteria oversight. No future specific plan, in my opinion, should be allowed to have internal oversight because of those unintended consequences that arise with that development. Now that the vacation home rental issues are mostly behind us, I look forward to reporting and getting enforcement and potential fines on the emergency exit road used by Clear Creek residents. It comes into my subdivision, which was omitted today by representatives of Clear Creek. It just doesn't attach to Jack's Valley Road, it comes through a subdivision. Any future projects that may be brought forward by Clear Creek L L C in the future will get a lot of scrutiny from the subdivision and others in the area. I'm also looking forward to future updates of Title 20. You folks have brought that forward in the past as a priority. I'm looking forward to your input as a board. I appreciate each and every one of you, and what you bring to the table from different realms, and it's good to have a lot of different perspectives when we're looking at code. Some of us aren't developers, some of us aren't land use planners, some understand conservation and open space better than others, and I hope this is brought forward in a more ironclad and prescriptive language way when we do Title 20, so there are less loopholes. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there additional public comment? Paul.
Thank you. It was not on the agenda, but only tangentially, and that's something I'd like to raise to my fellow commissioners. It was raised by, it might have been Ms. Waller, and that is, when a circumstance is that a part of a very large development is tardy, that is to say, it expires and it has to come back before this commission, is there any consequence, I ask our district attorney, that we can impose in terms of fees or costs? I realize that a fine might be punitive, and we cannot, because I can't see anything in Title 20 that allows us to do so, but is there anything we can impose? For example, if, and I'm just saying this in the abstract, that marketing makes it so that you can't proceed in accordance with the original plan. So, you're tardy, and you come back before the board, largely with the same plan, but you require an additional approval, which requires staff time, which requires commission time. Is there anything we can do as a consequence of such a circumstance?
Paul, I don't want to shorten the discussion on this, because it is an important issue, an important one that we might want to explore with, with the staff, but we're not agenda eyes to really to engage in this kind of a discussion after, after the conclusion of the agenda.
No, I understand that it's not for today, and it was only brought up tangentially, but is there, is it something we should look at, changing in Title 20, or change in Title 20? I guess that's the question.
Yeah, with all, with all due respect, I don't want staff to, to engage in a discussion or dialogue without public notice, and allowing all opportunity for private individuals to come forward. So, thoughtful questions and observation, but I think we need to end the, the discussion at this point. If there's no other business, I would like to remind everybody, June 18th at C V I C, we did close public comment. Yeah, June 18th, 1 P M. at C V I C. for the next Planning Commission meeting. Thank you very much, and the meeting is adjourned.